I will call the meeting of the Bourne Select Board of Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505. The password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. Callie, I see you on Zoom. Are you recording?
Not yet, but I'm going to be, yes.
All right. You just need to acknowledge that you are, for the record.
Okay.
Or will be. Okay. Thank you. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We'll begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. Then a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is reading of the Select Board vision and mission statements. Would someone like to read?
Sure. Take the vision. Go ahead.
Sure. Vision. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
And the mission?
I will read that. Sure. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Next is public comment on non-agenda items. Is anyone signed up for public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Next is public hearing. Application for annual all-alcoholic beverages on-premise common victular liquor license for Grill &amp; More located at 340 Main Street.
Hi. Good evening.
I have to read.
Of course.
Okay. So, I have my script. Introduction. Under General Laws, Chapter 138 and 140, as a licensing authority, the Bourne Select Board has received an application from Grill &amp; More, Inc., located at 340 Main Street, Unit 101, Buzzards Bay, to consider a new alcohol, all-alcohol common victular on-premise license. I hereby open the public hearing for that application. As the first order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the legal notice provided by the town for this public hearing. As a second order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the application and supporting materials provided to the town of Bourne dated February 7th, 2024. Having taken those actions, I will now open the floor to the applicant who may speak concerning the application.
Absolutely. Think about it, Chair. I'm Attorney Gillian Morton. I'm here representing Grill &amp; More, Inc. My clients, the owners, are here as well. The manager, Robert Youssef, and Joe Said, who is the owner as well. We are looking for a all-liquor license for this site. If you recall, this is on the Going to the Scenic Highway, the new development, excuse me, where there's, looking to have a restaurant there, as well as being able to serve alcohol beverages. So, we've supplied, in the materials, a floor plan for you to look at. The idea is this is going to be a great restaurant for, that's not around here even, and where I'm from, Lebanese style. Will you be able to go and grab your meat and your different food, the different small plates, as well as have a seat, have a glass of wine? One thing to note, because I know this site has an outdoor space, we're very cautious to make sure that the outdoor space is going to have several signs saying no alcohol at this point. That was something, again, where the location is, that we felt like that fit, to make sure that that's part of, you know, the license and the issuing, that it's only going to be inside the premises.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else to add?
Any questions, I'm happy to answer. You know, we, we applied and kind of did a rendering as well, so you could see the style. This isn't necessarily like a big sit-down restaurant. It's kind of more of the grab, have, have a drink, have a slice, or whatever it may be. But it's going to be, I think, something that's going to fit, fit the nature, and is something we don't have here in Bourne yet. So, it should be an exciting thing for the community, as, as far as just changing the, the, again, we don't have anything in the way of this sort of type of restaurant, even in, I can think, and then four surrounding towns.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the board? Is that my next place to go here?
I do not.
I don't.
I have no questions.
What, so what experience do, there, I, I noticed their career is in inter-gas and gas.
Caner, caner gas or something.
Caner, right.
Yes.
So, how do they come to, what's their experience with the restaurant and bar industry?
Yeah. So, one of the owners has had a liquor license down in Falmouth for, I believe, six years now. Extensive bartending experience, no violations down there. So, he has a good record, tip certified, all of that. So, they're looking to have an endeavor, and they chose Bourne, and being a great site, not only for the residents, but travelers coming down that highway who want to have good, authentic, you know, change of pace other than a slice of pizza, right? So, they're, they do have extensive, they're, they're having their insurance. They have had no violations in Falmouth. So, Robert Youssef, who's going to be the manager, will be partners with, with Joseph, who, they're both here tonight. So, if there's anything specific you want to ask them, you know.
So, is it, will they have waitstaff, or just order at a counter and sit down and eat it, consume it there, or grab and go?
Yeah. So, if you look at the floor plan that's in your materials, you kind of see that you're going to be going up. If you've ever been to a Lebanese restaurant or Middle East restaurant, they have kind of the meat that's going around, be able to grab their food, the different sides, the different things. Whether there might be a busboy or a staff making sure that the guests are taken care of, there might be that. But it's really going to be more of an assembly line in the front for the food. And then you would sit at the bar, and that's how you're going to be seated in the alcohol. Yep.
It looks like there's sort of bar seating, like at the windows and the bar seating.
Yeah. There's five, five seats on each side of the windows, and then the bar seats, the bar area, and then a couple of tables, it looks like.
Four seats over there.
So, it might be good just for them to come up and introduce themselves and tell a little bit about their, their experience, because it was not clear to me that inter-gas had on-premise. It looked like more, it looked like more of an off-premise. And, and so, I'd like to have.
For the record, my name is Joe Said. I'm a resident of Bourne for the last five years, and I love this stuff. Number two, she missed some stuff. I've been certified since 2022.
Okay.
I own Darkside Restaurant in Hyannis, 2004. I manage a bar at the Blue Anchor now. It's called Embargo in Main Street in Falmouth. Two and a half years. I was a bar manager and I was a bartender. I have an excellent idea and experience. I forget some of it now, but, you know, you get older, you forget. But this is my personal, my record.
That sounds, that experience sounds good, and the tip certified. That, it's helpful to have that, actually, in the background information, to have that explanation, because
And, and the beer and wine license in Falmouth for over six years now. Thanks God, you know, no problem, you know, because I'm not always there, to be honest with you. I, I manage it. But it's going smooth so far. I train my people, right?
Yeah.
I get machine for checking ID, you know, but for God's sake, something happened, it happened. But I'm doing my best.
Yeah. That sounds good.
To keep it in the right way.
So, that, what Anne Marie asked the question about, so you come up, you sort of like pick out what you're going to get, and then you take it, you sort of pay, and then go, take it to the table and sit down? Is that?
No, you're not going to pick up the drink and go away. No.
No, no, the food.
The food.
Food part of it.
We're going to have server. It's a little complicated, you know, the way how we set up our restaurant, because it's mostly sandwich. Something is different. It's going to be different. You're going to get the sandwich and walk out, or walk and sit at the bar drinking it. But at the bar, it's going to be bartender. It's going to be supervisor on the alcohol, definitely, you know. You're not going to go behind the bar and grab your beer, of course.
No, no, no. I, I assume that. But they, but they still get their food in a separate section. They can come to the bar with their food and sit down and have a drink.
You have the plan, you know, you have the.
So, it's not a full-service menu?
No.
Sit-down style.
That sounds good. And the, the part about the outdoor was good. I had a, I was a little bit concerned about the out. So, that's going to be marked for no, no alcohol in this area? Because then there's stairs to go upstairs. It's kind of open and, yeah.
Unless in the future, we want to extend. We have another store on the left side. It's going to be different licenses, different permit, different approval. We'll see how it'll go. You know, that's a beginner.
Okay. I have a question for staff. So, in the license, do we somehow say for the, for the 24-seat inside area for the alcohol, or like, how do we word that to be?
Sure. So, the legal ad actually was advertised to include this 24 seats outside because it's on the floor plan. It gives them the option to include it in the future without actually having to come back before a public hearing process and go through the whole two, three months process. But it doesn't require you actually utilizing it. So, we can put it in a stipulation on the conditions that there is no alcohol in that area, but then it can remain on the license for the actual premise, license premise, in the future.
Quick question, if I may.
Melissa?
Is that, now, is that outdoor area? Just looking, it will be enclosed?
There's a, it's like fence.
It's fenced in. Okay. Because I was just curious, because like the whaleback, you can't, I don't think you can sneak out that way. You can, it's locked.
So, when I looked at Google Maps, you couldn't tell that, and it didn't show on the plan. When you look at Google Maps now.
It's a new construction. Let's wait.
Yeah. There's just like three poles, and then stairs going upstairs. And it doesn't look like an enclosed outside area, which was kind of right. And I'm not sure that that's even shown on the plan.
The enclosed area, actually, if you were going to have alcohol in that section, is required by ABCC statute, that it has to be enclosed.
I thought so. Yeah. Thank you. Just want to make sure, because I'm looking at it. I was like, I'm not sure. Is that a fence or trees or?
A little of both.
Yeah. Really great. I just, you know, I just want to say, I think it's wonderful. My husband and I are bougie eaters, and we love new things and to try new food. So, I'm, I'm personally very excited.
Trying to bring something new to the town. Hopefully, you know, it's going to work out.
Something different.
We have a good feeling about it.
No, it sounds good. And what about Robert? Want to introduce yourself? Tell us about your experience in the restaurant and?
Yeah. He was the assistant of my partner.
Okay.
So, I have few, yeah. Robert, he used to live in Dubai. He used, his job was managing restaurants and decorating restaurants.
Okay.
I'm designer.
Designer, too, yeah. He came and worked together. I would not put my hand in the partner if I didn't like that guy, to be honest with you. He had excellent experience. He surprised me, which I've been before him, and that demand, but he know every movement, every fridge, every grill house has to go by safety, by fire, by everything. And he worked with me for a little time at the liquor license in Falmouth.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay.
So, it's also, it says it's pending the pre-operational inspection. So, is that, that should be stated in the?
Yes, it is actually recommended in the motion. If you, if the board does choose to approve it, it is, it's drafted in the motion. Yep.
Remember, we, we still under construction, though.
Correct. Do you think parking's going to be an issue?
I doubt it.
We have, we have more than enough.
Yeah. There's actually, I went back into the planning board, and there were, in the site plan, like 65 spaces and 25. Yeah. I was surprised, actually, that there's almost like 25 on either end, and then like ones in the middle. So, I.
We don't need more capacity, to be honest with you, because the space, we're going to make sure will make everybody happy. I don't want like 50 capacity, and I cannot feed everybody. I'm happy with the small capacity.
And it can be, yeah, very transient, too, if people.
So, so there were comments, there were comments for the pre-inspection for fire. There were comments for pre-inspection for the foo, for the health department. And this is in our purview, but I want to bring it up for the, it's not in the comments. So, for this premises, there's 3,095 is the allocation for this premises, which original application was based on possibly two restaurants with 60 seats. And this is now, we've got like 54 seats. So, I just want to have it be subject, just noted somehow, maybe by the sewer commissioners, of what, what the allocation is for the future, because if another restaurant's going in on the other end, there may need to be some sort of capacity. And I don't know how that actually gets, I'm not sure we've figured that out.
We will, that will be confirmed prior to any occupancy. So, it'll get reviewed again during the permitting stage. And if, if the sewer allocation needs to be modified, then we'll be bringing it back before the.
Okay. And then in the future, if there's another thing, and it's going to go over, then the sewer commissioners will be notified then.
Technically, that would be that change of use.
Yeah. So, we're just, we're, we're still working out our process for that stuff. So, I just want to, yeah. So, okay. That sounds good. So, we don't have to say anything now about the outdoor premise description, because.
It'll be in the.
Yeah. The other reason for it is, if they don't have it, they can't offer it. And if there's the summer section, like if somebody wants to go sit out, and it's nice weather, they at least will have the option to have it already fenced in and able, if they do a different business plan. So.
So, what's the check and balance for having it fenced in to allow that change?
During the inspection process.
Okay. So, after the inspection, if it's not fenced in originally, and then they want to start doing that, or is it going to be fenced in originally?
It is fenced in already, correct?
Not really fenced in with a gate.
Like a column.
That's a column. But you said after the inspection, which inspection?
The, the final, the occupancy.
The final inspection.
Yeah.
So, if we decide to go forward for the outdoor, that will make it legally fenced in safety.
Yeah.
If we decide to go, but we don't want to go too far with outside alcohol and several, we start to keep it like the way how, the way how we want it, to give it small capacity in and out, you know, we don't like, we don't, we don't try to keep like seating people or entertainment so far and stuff like this. You know, we are in a location, like a highway location, in and out.
In and out.
Yeah.
So, I actually do recommend then us omitting it. If we didn't have it in there, we couldn't even offer it tonight or include it for tonight. So, in that case, I actually do recommend that we take out the outdoor seating off of the license premise description.
So, in the motion.
So, in the motion, it would be as amended, omitting the outdoor seating.
When you make, when, when we make the motion, we'll just delete that part of it.
So.
Delete the outdoor premise.
Right. Because the liquor license only applies for indoor.
Serving alcohol.
Oh, oh, you said seating. You're going to admit the.
No.
With the outdoor seating, the alcohol option later on.
Unless we fancy, when the inspection will have it. Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Yep.
Definitely. Absolutely.
But for now, you're not serving here.
Absolutely. But when the inspection come, if we make it legally and fenced in, so we can have a waiter to, to, to.
In the future.
In the future. Correct.
Okay. Then we do need to leave it out.
Yes. So, we need to leave it in because there is an option later on.
That's what my thought was on that.
Currently, it's not fenced in because you're under construction.
Thank you. I cannot now ask for it if it's not fenced in.
Correct.
I'm not going to approve it, but.
But later on, if you want to ask for it, it'll be fenced in previous, once you're done with your final inspection.
Let's make it clear. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I think maybe what we should do. Where we have the motion, we have the motion, a new annual all-alcohol common victular on-premise license with the indoor/outdoor premise description and seating as outlined in the legal ad, subject to the approvals of all regulatory inspections of the premises prior to issuance, and, and subject to the outdoor premise alcohol license?
No, I think if you just, if I may, Madam Chair, I think if you just remove the outdoor in the beginning, where it says indoor/outdoor, if we remove the outdoor from there, and then after issuance, comma, outdoor premise, seating, and alcohol availability may be for future.
Well, no, because.
Something to that extent.
But it's all subject to final inspection anyway. So, what does it matter? It's all subject to final inspection. So, it's final inspection, it's not fenced in. They're not going to be able to serve alcohol up there. It's null and void. So, yeah. All right. It says right here, all regulatory inspections on the premise.
Just leave it the way it is.
I say it the way it is.
And then, in the future, if they decide to do outdoor, they can. That's perfect.
Well, they're subject to inspections anyway.
With the subject to inspections anyway. Exactly. And this is all, this is all based on ABCC's.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think we should leave the outdoor premise in the beginning. But I think after the, where it says prior to issuance, we should add, and the outdoor premise alcohol license subject to fencing and inspection.
That's fine.
Perfect.
I mean, so that's, you know, if you're going to do it in the future, there's got to be fencing, and there's got to be an inspection, and that's.
That's the only way we can do it, I guess. Right now, I cannot like.
Right. Yeah.
So, the inspection, that would be building commissioner would be inspecting that?
Yes.
Okay.
Inspection by the building inspector.
Or just use same language, regulatory.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because it could be the police.
Because it could be the police. Yeah.
Or ABCC.
An outdoor premise subject to.
Fencing and regulatory inspection.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, in, whoever's going to read the motion, unless you want me to?
If you want to, you read it.
Yeah. So, just at, I'll read it, and then someone can say so move.
Sure.
Okay. So, but before we do that, are we good now? I think we've answered. For me, I'm, I think it's good. I think we're all totally understanding. You have to close the public hearing first.
Questions for the public, and then close it.
So, so now we go to opening to the public.
I just didn't want you to forget that.
Okay. So, is there anyone from the public? Now, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Before you speak, please state your name and address. If you have questions for the applicant, please address them to me, the chair, and I will ask the applicant to respond. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to comment?
Seeing none.
Okay. Offering the applicant, you have anything else you would like to say to address the board of the public? Are we good?
Just wanted to say thank you. Also, I just want to say a shout out to Selectman's office. Your admins are great through this whole process. I don't know if you hear that a lot, but especially Maria was really good on everything that's, you know, needed to be done. So, I just wanted, good job.
She's, she's very conscientious.
No, I appreciate it. In other towns, you have a really great system. So.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, at this point, the licensing authority will deliberate. Is there anything else we need to deliberate on before I close the public hearing? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing. You have a motion and a second to close.
Motion to close the record is, you want to read the motion, Lieutenant? Okay. Motion to close the, the hearing record immediately prior to final dispositive vote. Okay. Motion by Peter. Sarah Second?
Second.
Anne Marie.
Anne Marie. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Do we need a roll call for this?
No, you're not on Zoom. Nobody's remote.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous, 500. All right. So, next we are at the motion. Motion to approve the application for a new annual all-alcohol common victular on-premise license with indoor/outdoor premise description and seating as outlined in the legal ad, subject to approvals of all regulatory inspections of the premise prior to issuance, and that the outdoor premise alcohol license is subject to fencing and regulatory inspection for the reasons stated by the Select Board during this hearing, and further to authorize and direct town staff and town council to prepare correspondence memorializing the same for transmission to the applicant and to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion?
Just thank you for coming to Bourne. You know, it's thank you for making an investment and, you know, bring your business to Bourne. We really appreciate it very much.
Thank you. This sounds like a great location for this business. It does. It really sounds like a great location and a great business. So.
Well, thank you. You know, I, I said it, and, and I love this town. I love it. I've been doing this down Cape, Middle Cape, everywhere. But this town, it get inside to my heart.
That's great.
And hopefully, we'll do more and improve it.
I really like your jacket.
And the scarf.
Best for success.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. And.
Congratulations.
Look forward to seeing.
Good night. Coming in.
Congratulations. Good night.
Next is discussion regarding the 100th anniversary of the fire department. Please introduce yourself and talk about what you're thinking.
Okay.
Good to see you again.
Yeah. It's been a couple days. Thank you. Well, I appreciate a few minutes from the board tonight to discuss this little project we're attempting to undertake. This coming, starting this year and into next year is the 100th anniversary of the founding of the Bourne Fire Department. I'm Steve Filbrick, retired fire chief of the town of Bourne, sorry. And I also have here retired Chief Martin Green and retired Lieutenant Phil Tora, who have volunteered to, or been recruited, one or the other, to help on this project. And so, what I want to do, basically, I just take a couple minutes to explain how we got where we are. And then, we have a question for you, and then we can proceed to how we're going to do about this. So. going to do about this, so.
It's good.
Over this last year, when I was doing some research on another historical issue, I had in the back of my mind that it was around 100 years ago the fire department was organized from what I had read, but when I dug into it, I had really thought it was a couple years from now, but as it turns out, it was starting this year and into next year. Back in 1924, a guy by the name of Harold Champion and some concerned citizens from Sagamore area contacted the Maxim Motor Company in Middleborough, which at the time was manufacturing fire apparatus, and they also did consulting work for towns, probably something that wouldn't happen these days, but Maxim came into town and did a survey of fire protection needs for the Town of Bourne. Prior to this time, there was nothing in the town except for a private organization in Buzzards Bay and a very small water department operation in Monument Beach. They'd had several large fires that were unable to be contained, and the, the citizens felt it was time to organize a municipal department. So as a result of that survey, which I have a copy of and will make available, I sent some documentation to the board of that request, et cetera. In 1925, at the annual town meeting, they put forth five articles to establish a municipal fire department under chapter 48 of the Mass General laws. That was approved by that, by that town meeting, forwarded to the legislature, and established a town, a fire department in 1925, which as a result of that, meant they had to appoint a fire chief and firefighters and purchase such fire equipment as necessary. There was five town meeting articles to do that. So once I gathered that information, I sent a letter to Chief Cody and, you know, to discuss about setting up some type of committee to commemorate this 100th anniversary. He suggested to me that I go through the board, because it was a question that came up regarding open meeting and that type of thing. So I want to make sure we do this the right way. I spoke with the chairman a couple times, and I think we probably don't have to go that formal with this, but I want to come here and, and see what your thoughts are on that part of it, and then beyond that, I have a few comments about exactly what we want to do, but I thought I'd ask that question so we can get an answer first, and what you feel we should do in regards to committee. I have an idea of membership, but we need to, you know, get past this, so I'll throw that back to you for a minute, if you want to.
Thank you. Marley, do you want to comment on this, or whether we should have a town committee for this, or whether it should be an independent volunteer committee, or do you have thoughts on that?
Well, I actually don't recommend this be a town committee. We have other departments that are also turning 100, namely the library, and for kind of various fairness reasons, I would find it difficult to staff or devote resources to one department and not all the departments.
Okay. I kind of felt myself that having a town committee puts a lot of burden on the committee. It's become subject to the open meeting law, you have to get sworn in, you have to do minutes, you know, you, it, it adds a layer of complexity that I'm not sure is necessary for this undertaking. I think this undertaking is a wonderful undertaking, I think it's great. I personally think it would be best if a volunteer committee, you know, organizes itself to commemorate this event, so. Any other thoughts from the board?
An independent committee will be a lot more, because you must, a lot more flexibility, what you want on it, you can be more creative, you're not, you're not subject to the constraints.
Right, and I, I just, my only concern was that we weren't crossing some line of, I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of the open meeting law these days, so I want to make sure we were doing this the right way, so that's why we're proceeding this way, but if everyone's okay with us forming our own committee, that's great. And so I just wanted to briefly go over a couple, what we had thought about doing. As far as membership on the committee, we were, I had a meeting this morning with Phil and went over a few things. We were looking at probably to start with a core, a core of five, five to seven people, which would include a couple of us retirees that are here tonight, and maybe a couple more, a representative of the fire chief or his designee from the department, and perhaps one from the firefighters' union also. I'd like to solicit if someone from the board would like to be ex officio on it, we'd be glad to have someone there. And the other, I was meeting over at the archives this morning, and they, the people from the Historical Society and, and the group over there would like to have a seat in this also. So that's what I was looking at as far as a membership, probably, I was, actually had already set up a date for a meeting in March, they have allowed us to use the facilities over at the archives also for this. And basically, what we're going to look at first is what we want to do, with really only three things that we discussed, and that was to set up some type of a parade thing which probably would be hosted or combined with the Fourth of July next year, also some fire department demonstrations, exhibits, and, and different type of shows of equipment, old antique stuff and new stuff throughout the town during that period that were doing this. It's pretty wide open, but those are the areas that we wanted to look at. I thought, as I mentioned in the letter, we have a couple people who have some experience in doing this, Phil in Dartmouth and another one of our firefighters in, I mean, in Kingston and another firefighter in Dartmouth. I was involved in the 84 centennial here in town, we did quite a large parade when we did that and a fire department muster. That was a lot of work, but I think where we already have an active Fourth of July committee, I don't think they would, I, I obviously need to talk to them, but I think combining this with them would be a good time to do that type of thing rather than do something totally separate. So we've also probably set up a committee or a subcommittee to look into some funding option, options for this. I understand there are simple, a couple different areas where funding might be available for this, this type of a historical initiative, so we need to look into that also. And obviously meet with some other groups around town to see what they'd like, like I said, the Fourth of July parade group, probably some of the civic associations and that type of thing. So basically, that's what we would like to do. There's quite a bit of interesting history to the department. I had also spoken with Barry Johnson also, who's interested in helping, and his grandfather was the first chief of this department. And so we have a lot of history here, a lot of very interesting stuff that happened over the years, the evolution of the department from a, from a small volunteer department to a more of a full-time department, and, and then, of course, EMS moving in, and the whole evolution of it is, is a great story to get to where it is now. And, and there's a number of us that have quite a vested interest in this through the years. My grandfather worked in the Monument Beach Station for 32 years as a house man, which is all they had back in those days, and there's a lot of history just to those buildings. So, so there's a lot we were going to go through, and we're going to try and make some decent contribution to the town and have some fun with it over the year. I'm hoping maybe this summer, we may have some type of a fundraiser along the line of either possibly a clambake or fireworks or something like that to get the word out also. So that's basically where we're at with this, and basically, all I needed really was kind of the go-ahead to us to start putting this together, and, and we'd be glad to come back and report anytime that you'd like, and if, like I said, if someone from the board wants to sit in on a couple meetings, see what we're doing, we'd be glad to do that, too. I think we're just going to get a few people together next month to organize, and then we'll, you know, move on from there.
Sounds good. So a couple, just a couple things. I think that this, the way we've, we're talking about setting this up is a volunteer committee.
Right.
So it wouldn't be ex officio, selectman, it wouldn't be department head representatives or department representatives, if they wish to volunteer to do it, then they're welcome to do it. But I, I think it's totally volunteer, so it would be good idea for you guys to somehow have something in the newspaper or to say, you know, if you're interested in volunteering, this is how you do it, or this is how, you know, this is who you contact, so that you can kind of organize a little bit more formally, and if anyone on the committee is interested in like volunteering and being part of it, you know, just let us know so that we don't end up with like a quorum showing up at a meeting.
Yeah, well, we.
Because we have to watch out for that.
Well, yeah, we don't want to turn it into something.
Yeah.
Too big, I mean, you get too many people and you don't get anything done.
And I think the historic, I think connecting with the Fourth of July is, parade is a really good idea, and I think connecting with the Bourne Historical Society is a great idea because, you know, they have events that you could, you know, become part of, you know, become Daffodil Day or whatever, where you, you know, bring out equipment or have something there on their site, so.
Yeah, and they, like I said, they've offered, they, they said to me this morning, if you wanted to set something up here in the archives building for some type of display or something, would be glad to go help us with that and, and that type of thing.
Sounds great.
So, so that's where we're at, and basically, we'll, we'll, the next time we have a meeting, we'll, I'll just forward something to you, just to know what we, what we have, or who's on it and where we're going from there.
That sounds wonderful.
And.
The Bourne Community Engagement Committee as well is a good resource.
That'd be a good place to go as well.
When you're looking for funding, when you get some events in mind specific that you're trying to raise money for, going to Bourne Community Engagements, they do have some funding that they might be able to assist you with some of that, so.
Yeah, that was one of the things that was, had been brought up to me, so. So we just want to get this off the ground and get it moving, and I think we can have a lot of fun with it, and, and it'll be, look good for the town and, and the department to have this, you know, anniversary mark like this, so.
It's good that you, excuse me, it's good that you're doing this, you know, this is the celebration, because I, the department's involved over those 100 years, like you said, from a small volunteer department to a full, you know, full, full bore department. I mean, don't forget, you also have the EMS that's involved with the fire department, and during that time, the department's expanded, it's gotten, it's gotten bigger, but there've also been some significant events within those 100 years, the fire at Mass Maritime on the ship being one, going over and helping out in San Luis when you had the, the fire at the oil fields over there at one time, and the list can go on and on, and we're very likely to have, we're very likely to have a full, a full-time fire EMS department that runs smoothly under Chief Cody, but it's, and it's running smoothly because of the previous chiefs before that people have evolved and they've learned from, so, you know, it's, it's nice to, you know, to, to take the time to do this, because for everything that they've done for us, I think it's great that we're doing this, just to give them the recognition to the staff, the active staff that we have, but as well as the people who were there before, you know, the retirees that gave a lot, you know, sacrifices and the whole nine yards, so it's really, it's good, it's good that we're doing this.
Yeah, I, you know, this last summer, myself and Phil put together a clam boil for the retirees, and it's the first time it had been done in quite a while, and, you know, people that are, are, are out of it for a little while really enjoy being contacted and say, hey, you know, can you help us out, could you do something? So I don't think there'll be any problem finding people that want to help, but, but it's a good opportunity, and I'm, I'm glad that, you know, glad to have the chance to help make it happen, so.
Great, so, and feel free to come to public comment anytime if you want to announce something or just keep us, yeah.
Once we get the committee together, I'll, I'll send you a list, and then maybe we could put it on the agenda a month later or so, I'm just giving an update as we move along.
That sounds great.
And, and get some more ideas.
That sounds awesome, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for stepping forward and for getting this started. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is school committee, school department request for use, to use $100,000 from the Special Education Reserve. Superintendent, please step forward.
Hi, nice to join you all tonight.
Good evening.
Very quiet in the schools this week.
So, explain what's going on here, or just your request, or like, what's prompted this, or?
Sure, so this would be the second time in the past few years that we've come for a request. If you recall, there's a special ed reserve fund that every now and then through town meeting is funded. It's currently at, I believe, $475,000, $76,000, is that correct?
I think so, there might be a little bit more.
Okay, somewhere in that range. I know we, we try to fund it up to a half million, and really, it's used for unanticipated costs. So we budget the best we can every year, the, usually the unanticipated costs are what we call a move-in, so this would be a family that has a significantly special needs child that comes to our community. Now, if they're also a Massachusetts community, there's a cost share for the first year, but if they're not, if they're from out of state or another country, there's not, and so the burden comes in that year. So this is for fiscal year '24, the one we're currently in. We have anticipated costs of about $175,000, but we usually pay for these costs and are able to neutralize them through our circuit breaker funding, which is a reimbursement funding that comes in every year. So we're asking for $100,000, again, to keep the reserve healthy, we don't want to ask too much, and also, we feel we can, by the end of the year, absorb the other costs through our circuit breaker. So the process is that the school committee votes at first to ask to bring it to you all to consider, they did that already, and so you have the certificate of vote, and now we're asking you to please consider that, that that funding comes to the school department to balance our budget for out-of-district tuitions.
Is there any questions from the board?
So it is an out-of-district placement?
It's a collection of four different placements, so some are augmented staffing, so it's all out-of-district, but some are, you know, sometimes the child needs a little extra staffing or their IEP calls for more, there's a move-in, and then there's an unanticipated placement, whereas we can't provide what the child needs. So it's a collection of about four different pieces that's totaling that up. Like I said, we usually try to see, you know, see to the end of the year, see how it's going to go, but we're projecting that this will be a cost that we'll have, and we don't want to scramble at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? So the motion would be to approve $100,000 transfer from the Special Education Reserve Fund to the Bourne Schools FY '24 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Peter Jarrett.
Pick one.
Who can go first, who goes quickest?
Is there any further discussion?
None, thanks.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you for coming in on a school vacation. Okay, next item is consent agenda, and. Agenda that was given to us, it's not the amended one, right?
I copied the wrong one, it's, it's only the.
I was just asking, so it's fine. So for the consent agenda item tonight, it's just the appointment of Nikell Fox.
Yes.
Nicole Fox to the Community Engagements Committee as the Cultural Council Representative with a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is update south side fire station, site selection and condition of accounts.
So I just wanted to very briefly give the board an update. The RFP for site selection has gone back out, we talked about that after the Pecassett Station was ruled out because of the flood hazard area, so we have made some adjustments, and responses are due back on March 1st, and hopefully, we will receive some promising responses. And I also wanted to give you kind of the condition of the accounts, and I can't, what I can, what I, what I want to say is that the contracts are in place for the owner's project manual, manager and the architect. Those contracts are in place and fully committed through, until design development. So we're, we have contracts in place to get us through preliminary design and cost estimating, and then when the site is found and the, the cost estimates and the, kind of, the
And then when the site is found and the, the cost estimates and the kind of the preliminary design is ready to go to town meeting, the, the town meeting request will include design development, bidding.
You mean bid documents? By divine design, you mean bid documents?
Yep.
So one of the things when that orig, when that three hundred thousand was added, that, that was supposed to include those bid documents. That was the reason it was added at three hundred thousand. So we're not going to be able to do it with the length of time and the different things that are happening. But hopefully, there'll be a little bit of money left from this.
There should be, there will be some money left from this. But when we have the actual design and the cost estimates, those will be all in. So that'll include design development, bidding, construction, construction oversight, you know, the, the full amount to bring the project through to completion.
Are there any questions from the board? So if, if we get a response to the RFP for March first, and there's a good, that, something that looks promising for a site, are we looking to the fall? Are we looking to the annual for like coming back? Or, I mean, it's going to take a while anyway. I mean, it depends, I mean, what's our, I'd like to have an idea of the timeline because it's been so long. I like to feel like that we have, we're making some progress.
So if we, if we receive a promising RF, a response, if we receive a promising response that the committee brings forward to you, then we would go into executive session and you would authorize me and council to negotiate. Depending on, you know, depending on negotiations.
Then we know.
That, yeah. So if negotiations, like last time, became protracted and difficult, then that's a different schedule than if negotiations are, 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 if they're a very willing seller and we're able to come to terms quickly. So I, I can't necessarily rule out kind of a last minute add
Right.
for the May town meeting. I think that would be very, I think that's very
I was meaning May, next May.
Oh, oh.
May is twenty twenty five.
No, no, no. I think, I think fall is safe. I think fall is safe.
Yeah, I was thinking, well, even if we do, even if we do, I'm thinking, you know, so we have the, the land and then we have, we have the land, then we have the, the, the building. And so we can talk about it. So I, hopefully sometime in late March or April, we can have a follow-up discussion about the status of where we are with the RFP and what the next steps are going to be.
Okay, let me be clear. I am only talking about site acquisition.
Yep.
I am not talking about the construction article. So it is entirely possible that if, you know, it is entirely possible that if we have a very willing seller, we could put something on the special.
For, for, to authorize select board to negotiate in the terms best conditions?
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't have been able to do our due diligence on all the geotech and all that other stuff. So, okay.
Right. But
That sounds good.
For land acquisition, the fall.
Yep.
And then for construction, next May with the ballot question to follow.
Okay.
After the May town meeting of twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, okay.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yes, yes. So, so land, land only. We can't do them both at the same time.
No.
Right. You have to, yeah. So I'd like to, just so we're all clear on the steps that we're going to take. And so that makes, that makes a lot of sense. So.
And is there thought of Plan B in the event the RFP?
So the
Just panic.
We're running out of options here.
Just plain panic.
The subcommittee's vote was that this, this is, if we don't receive anything favorable after this, the next step that we take is to move forward with removing some of the land on Shore Road out of Article ninety-seven protection. So that was, they voted, we're going to try this one more time. And if we are not successful again, then we move forward with the Article ninety-seven protection.
And that, you, you have verified that that's not in floodplain like the Pecasset. So you've already looked at the maps to make sure that there might be other geotech things, but, but in terms of the, the map for the floodplain.
Right.
It's not. It's not in the flood hazard area.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Thank you. I just, I do want to keep having updates on this so that we don't lose track of what's going on and everyone's informed.
I do expect the committee will be back to see you with a recommendation after the RFP.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, next is town administrators' report.
Thank you. I have a brief one tonight. I want to let you know that the final rooftop units here at the community building have now been installed. Train is resolving the final outstanding items on their deficiency list. And a fully functioning HVAC system should be operational soon. I did attend a listening session sponsored by the Commonwealth as part of their Resilient Coasts Planning Initiative. I will continue to share information about this as I receive it. And I will pay close attention to specific programs that align with Bourne's coastal concerns, especially regarding low-lying roads and other infrastructure. The Finance Department and I are working to close a budget gap that has arisen after receiving the preliminary cherry sheet numbers. We have also just been made aware of an error from the Barnstable County Retirement Board that has increased the town's assessment for fiscal year twenty-five. I will be back before you in March to discuss some options for rebalancing the budget in advance of town meeting based on this new information. I'd like to congratulate Chief Cody and the Fire Department for securing a firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services. And for the first month of the new year, ISWAM has diverted one point three tons of food waste from the landfill so far. That's it for me tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Next item is policy. Status review on policy. The first thing is something different is the purchase and sale.
One oh six.
Page one oh six. It's a lot of, uh.
The RFP is long in there, sorry.
It is.
Okay, so, um, this, we, last year in February, we had, had a discussion about looking at policies that we were going to review and focus on. And so I thought it might be a good idea to kind of just do a review of where we are on some of those policies and to note the progress that we have made. So first was the Human Resource Comprehensive Redrafting of the Current Employment Handbook. And that was a goal. And staff is still working on that. And I think Marlene is reviewing a final draft that she's going to be bringing to us shortly.
Yep.
The second one was Financial Policies Comprehensive Review, which was also a goal. And the first draft has been distributed to stakeholders for comment. It is scheduled for the Select Board first reading on March nineteenth. So that's making a lot of progress there, too. The next is Rules of Procedure, all sections. We worked through several sections and approved those changes. And then we just did a reapproval, revised approval last week. So that is complete. Next is Acceptance of Private Roads. We had a first reading and sent some comments back. And that is scheduled to come back to the board on March twelfth. It's with staff right now.
And with council.
Okay, staff and council.
Yes. So we're meeting internally with council next week. And then, so the second reading version that you'll receive will have council's comments.
Okay, that's great. Curbside trash and recycling, which was identified in twenty twenty-two, has been approved and is complete. Plowing of unaccepted roads, we, I think, decided that we didn't need a policy on it. The bylaw guides private roads eligible under the bylaw.
It, it's actually the law.
The law, okay.
It, it's the general law.
And so we've, we've, we've said that as a procedure, I guess, roads that are laid under the subdivision control law and are open to the public are going to be plowed. And so we've made that sort of consistent. Special Events Policy, which was also, I think, introduced last February, has been approved. And the next step is to review fees and to have that discussion. The next was the Bourne Sewer Commissioners Fog Management Policy, and that's been approved and is complete. The Sewer Commissioners Abatement Policy, we're going to have a revised draft on that. I guess it's going to be worked on. So the next is the Marijuana License Policy and Procedures, which has been established now as a goal as of November sixth. And along with the Liquor License Policy and Procedures and the Aqua Coastal License Policy and Procedures. And I think what the subcommittee has talked about, and I think the board as well, is that, that we need to focus on those three things, that that's our next area of focus for making sure we get, you know, make our progress on that. So the other, there's a couple of other policies that are listed here. One was an IT user policy, which currently is on hold pending the HR policy.
It is, yes. We have it wrapped into the, the HR handbook.
The Code of Conduct Policy is kind of on hold for prioritization or need, I don't know. Policy on RME for the CWMP is on hold for CWMP discussion. Sale and disposal of town property is on hold for prioritization. We, we did have a policy that Bob Troy had like proposed several years ago, and it's probably something we need to do.
Several, I mean, Bob's been gone for a while.
Yeah. Then there was some discussion of memorials and a request for less than five years. That's kind of on hold for prioritization. And then there was the Blight bylaw that was proposed as a bylaw in twenty twenty-two. And that's also kind of on hold for prioritization. So, I mean, I think at this point, what Marlene has asked for is that we focus on the three policies that are, and like get those done. And then we prioritize maybe after, when we start, when we do our goal prioritization with Marlene, that we can have that further discussion. But does anybody have any comments or suggestions on this? I think it's notable that we've made a lot of progress in the last year and focused and gotten things done. Anybody have anything to add?
No, I just like seeing those complete.
Yeah. More bold. That's the goal.
All right. The next item then is some revisions to the town seal. So it's for discussion. I think we heard that the Historic Commission was interested in hearing how we felt about it. And then the question becomes if we're interested, we think it's something that we should be looking at, who should be doing it? Peter.
Yes, I brought this up because I've been discussing this with the Bourne Historical Society in my capacity just to see what their feelings were on it. And they felt that because it's a town department, you know, it's our official seal that it should come from the Bourne Historical Commission. Now, the Bourne has, who we appoint, the commission wants, like you said, wants to hear from us. See, if we do want to change it, give them direction of how, what we know formally through this board. And from what I understand, if you look at a town seal that's on top of our letterhead, it shows a teepee with some indigenous people, you know, within it. And a lot of seals that you see today don't even do any, anything of the sort. You see more like something that's symbolic, like in, in Bourne would be the canal or the bridges, instead of just putting a, the family of indigenous family or the teepee in front. Because it's actually, actually, if you look at it through history, the seal was, you know, it's not accurate, you know, in that. But that's Melissa's expertise.
You also have to remember, you're suggesting putting the canal in there, but the canal was not there when
When nineteen eighty, eighteen eighty-four.
River, the Mammoth River.
Yeah, sure.
Creek and a stream. I actually have, I have pictures.
So, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. But I think we as a board need to, I think it's long overdue. And I think we should give the Historical Commission a chance to see what they can come up with. Because, you know, you know, they are, they are, that's the committee we appointed for historical significance, you know, to hear the, you know, and to protect the historical interest. So I think it would be, I think it would be great if they decide to take this forward and see what they can come up with and see. And then if they bring it back to us with a recommendation, then we say yes or no. But I think it's something that's long overdue and
Does anybody else have any comments?
No, I, I have some things to add. I mean, we, we can obviously look at the seal and see there's certain elements that are blatantly incorrect, right? We can, we can, we can see those. They're obvious. I think that, you know, the Historic Commission is probably the right, or, you know, the right committee to take the task on. But I don't think it should be initially, okay, what are we going to change it to? I think there's going to be, has to be a lot of discussion and a lot of research done, you know, they're going to, of course, people are going to, the, the town and the people, the, the residents are going to want, they're going to want to be able to share their opinion on it. I think that, you know, removing, as native and indigenous people have spoke on, it's the human imagery that's really the issue with indigenous people. And I don't think what should be, you know, the, the, of course, being indigenous land, especially the history of Bourne and Plymouth are very closely connected, right? I, I don't think that the indigenous perspective should be completely removed from it. And like you said, maybe add the canal. But I think we could, you know, add, they could talk about what elements are important to the seal and maybe do a combination of both, not necessarily with a native person in the imagery. So I think with, with the right people working on it and some dialogue and some respectful conversation as to why it's historically inaccurate, why it might be time to change it, maybe use examples from other municipalities, because there are a lot throughout the Commonwealth who've changed them. So we certainly could use different examples from other places. Mashpee being one. They recently, you know, revised their seal. So, yeah, I agree. I think the commission would, might, you know, would be the, the right people to be tasked with it. Of course, in consultation with the local tribes, that's never a bad idea. And so, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at. I see Jack is up on the screen. I'm not sure. I know we haven't got that far yet. But I know Jack has been a, you know, sort of a proponent to get the seal revised and to make it more accurate, more respectful. So, yeah, that's what I have to offer. I agree. I think it's time. And, but I, I do also feel that without the right amount of education, it can turn into, it can turn into more animosity between residents that have different views. So if it's done properly with respectfully, as I said, and with the right amount of education, people will understand why it should be changed. So that's my two cents today. I know it's
And I hope, I hope that in that conversation, it promotes the true, like what we value historically in our community, where we've come from, right?
Sure.
And, and where we're going. I think those are important. I, I hope those conversations happen so we can, you know, and the opportunity, I think, is real important for the Historical Commission, if that's the route we take, that they truly engage the community in this process and decision-making. That's really important.
Because you want to reflect everybody's views, you know. You can add, you know, you can just out of, just examples, you know, without a human imagery on there. And mind you, we're not that wimpy. Our native, our native folks would be pretty buff. They wouldn't be. But, but, you know, you can use But, but, you know, you can use elements like a redtail hawk feather or, you know, there's a lot of different elements that could represent native and indigenous people without having the imagery itself, so, as well as represent the history.
I have a suggestion, though. I have a suggestion. Because the town of Natick had their town seal was a puritan talking to indigenous people or something. And then there was some say, some people said that they were comfortable, like, they didn't like that. So what Natick did is they went to their town meeting and they had Town Meeting establish a town seal review committee. And so.
Town Meeting did it.
Town Meeting did it. It's kind of like, remember when the Canal Side Commons Committee was like, set, was like, set up?
Oh, that by Town Meeting? I think so. Yarmouth did the same thing.
I.
Yeah, some, they all do it different, right? You're right. That's true. You could.
And then, 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 you know, who should be on the committee? I mean, it's, because they did a survey, so they surveyed people. They got town input. You know, um, I, is, I don't, the Historic Commission hasn't come to us and said, we really like to be involved in doing this.
That's what I was going to say, sort of, too, was, do they want to, is the question.
Yeah, or is there, is there something that they're interested in?
So can I just add a little bit? So I, I think, I think what's important in the first step is, there's, there needs to be research.
Yes.
There's, there's a lot of research that needs to go into this. And it, it's going to be a lot of historical research, things of the past that have happened in the town of Bourne. And, and one of the things that I'm, I'm just going to throw out there is, this was a huge train station right down the street here that was massive. And all these soldiers that went off to the base and to, over to war, a lot of them left from here. And there are so many high school students that have no idea that there used to be a whole train station here.
Right.
And, you know, so there's a lot of elements of the town of Bourne that could be incorporated. So I think the research right now is the key element.
Yes.
And, and I think that has to be done first and brought back. And brought back with the ability of the public to have input.
Absolutely.
And have understanding of a lot of the history and research that is done.
The question then becomes, does it, does the town seal have to reflect history? Or does it not reflect?
It doesn't necessarily.
It doesn't always, you know.
Not necessarily. So, but if you're going to represent the town on your seal, you, you have to decide what parts you want to represent. And I think the key is you want to take some of the bigger elements. And if you don't do research and find those elements, you're going to.
I think Mashpee used the Mashpee River, you know, as their, that's what their, their new seal was, you know, sort of designed after, right? So, I mean, it could be, there's so many options. And, and I think, again, I don't want to overspeak, but Jared is right. It really starts with educating people, doing the historical research to, to identify the layers of the, why it is what it is today and then why it should be this tomorrow and elements we should do, we should use.
I'm just glad that we're having the discussion because it's been long overdue. Various people have reached out to me over the last few years about this and have, and have concerns. So at least now that it's on, it's, we're talking about it now. We can, and if we're going to do this, we'll do it right. You know, we don't have to rush through just to get it off the list. You know, I want this done right the first time. And so I will defer it to the board.
I mean, I think one of the things that's interesting is that we do have a seal that's historically inaccurate.
Well, a lot of the towns, if you really, if we put them, I've had seen so many beside, beside. They're all very similar. And a lot of them are very offensive, you know? We've got Looking Up, too.
Yeah, well, what are they going to do about the Massachusetts seal?
I know. Well, that's a whole nother animal.
Right.
So, but that did a lot of research. Yeah, we do have some, some folks online.
Jack, did you want to speak? Did you have something you wanted to talk? Did you make a comment? Are you there?
Now you're, now you're unmuted.
Yes, sir.
We can hear you.
Yeah, you can hear, we can hear you.
You're talking about this. Thank you. The reason I've been banging a drum over this issue is that the teepee is glaringly inaccurate. And so if we do nothing except change the teepee to a B2 and consult the tribe with other of the native imagery items, this, the seal that we have is historic and there's a, you know, it's a well-known artist who designed it. It, it just needs some updating. Now, just to give a little background, about a year ago, we talked about this here and it got kicked to the Historic Commission, who talked about it at quite a few meetings. And the feeling amongst that committee that I attended was that it was unanimous. Everybody believed it was time for an update. And the secretary had done a lot of research. Jared, you mentioned research should go into it. No need to reinvent the wheel. A lot of research has been put into it. But so much time gone, went by, they kind of lost track of what they were supposed to be doing, so. But here is, given this a boot, I would suggest we kick it back to the Historic Commission, who's already got some, a file cooking on this. And perhaps they could create this subcommittee and move the ball forward.
Yeah.
Again, thanks for talking about this. It's important to me and I think it would reflect well on our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
That's all I got.
So I think we should hear from the Historic Commission as to whether they're interested.
Sure.
But I, I do think that it's not just research.
No.
It's reaching out to the public. It's some sort of a survey. It's getting public input. So maybe we ask them if they're interested in doing it and, and for them to come back to us with a plan about how they think it should be done and who should be involved. I mean, if there's more, it seems to me, just having the Historic Commission do it is too narrow.
Sure.
That, that more people should be involved.
Yeah, there has to be, there has to be opportunity for the public to engage in this process.
Because you don't want it to turn into a.
We have to figure that out.
Well, there's also costs associated with it.
But again, if, if, if the, if the general public doesn't understand or know all of the history or the, the research that could be done, and the Historical Society is ultimately a great starting point.
Yeah.
I, I think. At, at least if nothing else, they, they can provide a lot of the history research and offer that to the public, for the public to understand and make comment and, and put their input. There, there's probably going to be folks in the public that have things that have happened here in Bourne that even the Historical Society would, would go, oh, jeez, I forgot about that. So, you know, that, that's the key, is to allow a lot of input, I think.
You get strong opinions and then you get people who understand. And the, the, really, the goal is to educate people on why it should be changed so that it's not harmful. Because, you know, it may be harmful, the imagery to the native people, but you don't want to create a reverse domino effect and just alienate everyone. You want it to be, like I said, respectful. Everybody feels like they have an opinion. And it really does make it go much further.
An open effort.
Sure.
For everyone.
So does someone have a motion they want to make?
Make a motion that we refer to, we refer the discussion on changing the town seal to the Bourne Historical Commission and have the Bourne Historical Commission report back to the board with their findings and recommendations on process.
Second.
On findings and process?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's a motion by Peter and a second by Ann Marie, I mean, by Melissa. Sorry. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a timeframe when we'd like them to get back to us?
We have in two months because.
Yeah, I, I mean, sooner the better and, and, you know.
After town meeting?
Yeah, maybe they can get back to us and at least maybe see what they, they could at least tell us what their thoughts are by a couple of months, I think, should be good.
Hopefully get back to us by June.
Yeah.
By June.
Thought, yes.
Okay.
Whether, yeah, we want to take this on.
Okay. No minutes. Can you check and see if we ever approve the minutes of December 5th?
I will check.
Okay. Committee reports?
Thursday night, the Affordable Housing Trust will be meeting with the Affordable, with the Housing Partnership and the Planning Board for a joint meeting to go over the accessfully dwelling bylaw. So we can see if we can create some, some accessory housing units, you know, to help with the need for affordable and workforce housing. So I will be there because our chair, Sue Ross, will be out of town. So I will be representing the Affordable Housing Trust that evening.
Is that at the Planning Board?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, correspondents?
Select board correspondence for February 16th, 2024. A, materials from Cape Light Compax DPU 24-15 Energy Affordability Meeting. B, Richard Cantor Talent Bank Form. C, Upper Cape Tech Minutes from January 11th, 2024. And D, Buzzards Bay Action Committee Update and Grant Information.
Thank you. Future agenda items? I did send out kind of a draft schedule that's subject to change, but it's like. Next meeting date is next week for the sewer commissioners, February 27th. There's no meeting on March 5th because it is presidential primary election.
Oh, I thought it was because it was my birthday.
That's the real reason.
Really? There's a primary?
And then March 12th and 19th for the select board. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any further abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you.